Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 8th Board Meeting. If you would, please stand and pledge allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's enough out of you.
I didn't know it was like giddy.
Right. It could be.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce myself by name of Board Member. I am Crowe Sherwood, Superintendent of Beach Grove City Schools. And tonight, we are going to enter into the phase of our Board Meeting that we love the most, and that is the celebration of our students. So we're so grateful to our families and to our students for being here this evening. And we are going to have our principals say a few special words about each of the students that will be getting celebrated. What I wanted to say before we get started with the honoring of each of our students is the fact that this doesn't happen by accident. So I wanted to say that tonight, we are celebrating Five Students of the Month, and then we are also celebrating our Athletes of the Month. What I want to say is that we have about 2,800 students in Beach Grove City Schools. And tonight, Five Students of the Month are going to be celebrated. So you should feel really, really honored that your child, your family member, that you students have been selected out of all of those students. It is such a big deal. And I also wanted to say to our families who are here tonight, thank you. This does not happen by accident. You are not one of Five students being celebrated by accident. It's because your families have poured into you all of the things that make for Students of the Month. Academic, kind, engaged, caring, all of those wonderful things. So thank you for pouring into the students that we are gifted to serve during the day. So without further ado, we're going to turn things over. Tonight, we're going to start with our middle school. So Mr. Morgan from our middle school will be introducing his Student of the Month. We will have a celebration of that student. We will take their picture. And then when we're done with all of our student celebrations, we'll have a final picture, and then we will get you guys on the way. So you don't have to hang around for the rest of the meeting. But we're going to kick things off with our Beach Grove Middle School Principal, Mr. Ryan Morgan.
I would like to welcome up Amaya Voskis. Voskis. Oh, I knew I was going to do it. Sorry. All right. So Amaya is being recognized by our math and ELA department, and they have wonderful things to say about her. So Amaya consistently demonstrates outstanding qualities in attitude, effort, and participation. A proud member of our National Junior Honor Society, she has maintained an impressive academic record with no grade lower than a B during her time at Beach Grove Middle School. Her strong work ethic and dedication to her studies were recognized early in the school year, leading to her placement in the honors math course. While many students might find the transition to a more rigorous academic environment intimidating, Amaya has embraced the challenge with enthusiasm and confidence. She's exceeded expectations in the honors course, tackling the increased standards with both eagerness and professionalism. Amaya's willingness to push herself and embrace challenges has been truly remarkable, setting her apart as a leader in her class. In addition to her exceptional performance in math, Amaya has demonstrated the same level of diligence and commitment in English. She consistently submits high-quality work on time, showcasing her ability to manage her responsibilities effectively. Her positive attitude and cheerful demeanor shines through in everything she does, making her a joy to work with. It is an absolute privilege to have Amaya as a student. And we are certain that she will continue to excel in any future endeavors she pursues. With her unwavering determination and positive outlook, Amaya is sure to achieve great success in whatever she sets her sights on. Congratulations and thank you.
Mr. Morgan, you said that you needed to go first tonight because Amaya is running off to something else this evening, right?
That is correct. We are going to a band recognition, I believe. Is that correct?
So double recognition tonight. Amazing. Congratulations. So great. Go get your photo. Congratulations, Amaya. And while Mr. Morgan is getting that photo taken, we're going to turn things over to Beach Grove High School. Mr. Trent Austin is our Principal. Mr. Austin.
Make sure they're here because I know that they were going to... Aubrey? Aubrey and Adam? There she is. I couldn't scan the crowd. Okay, I thought so. Yeah, I told him, I said, if he happens to pop in, yes. So as a father of multiples, this brings me great joy to honor a multiple, right? And so it's my honor to recognize, on behalf of the high school, Aubrey Klein. So a couple of nice words that were shared by your teachers, Aubrey. Ms. Dean says Aubrey is known for her integrity and kindness. She treats peers, faculty, and staff with the utmost respect. Aubrey maintains a positive attitude and is polite and contributes to a positive school environment. And Mr. Bruner, math teacher, says Aubrey has been a pleasure to have as a student in geometry, even though suffering through concussion from wrestling. She worked hard not to fall behind in her studies. It is always satisfying to look out at the class and see a smiling face. Aubrey is a strong student and will respond, though quietly, when called upon. I am quite happy to see her honored as the April Student of the Month. Congratulations, Aubrey.
I think this is the first time that we've ever had twins nominated at the very same time. It's wonderful. One other time? How about that? All right, very good. While that photo is taken, we will invite Mr. Adamson from Hornet Park Elementary School. She is ready? She is ready.
So Hornet Park, we always have the pleasure of recognizing our littles, and they're usually adorable and little. And make no mistake, Yasmin is adorable. But there is nothing about her personality that is little. And you're going to see that as I read this. The Hornet Park staff absolutely adore her, and she is definitely a little leader. So Mr. Martin says Yasmin is an indispensable part of Room 117. She is always a bright light in the morning with her radiant smile and positive attitude. You can see that now. She is a hilarious student who always has something witty to say to lighten the mood. She works hard and shows leadership in class by helping others stay on track. In fact, recently, with a majority vote, she was chosen as our class president and helps delegate tasks, care for iPads, and assist classmates. What a privilege it has been to help to have her in class. That's from Mr. Martin. Nurse Karen says Yasmin is a very sweet and respectful girl. I get to see her every day in the clinic and always enjoy my chats with her. Well deserved. And then Ms. Schweitzer in art says Yazzy is one of the best first-grade artists I've ever had. She has a talent that shines, and she is always going the extra mile in the creativity department. Most importantly, though, she uses her talents to help others that are struggling without me ever even having to ask her. Yasmin always has a big smile that lights up the room, still there, and never fails to be a role model to her peers. They all kept writing. Mrs. Gillespie in music says Yasmin is such a sweet girl. She loves to help take care of her sister by walking her to class. Her kindness and empathy also showed daily. Every time I ask how her day is going, she asks me how I am doing. Very mature. That doesn't happen often with a first grader, but it does with her. She is a lovely young girl and loved so much. And then finally, Mrs. Corbin says, I know Yasmin a little from her being in Ms. Byrne's room last year, but I am impressed with her this year because she walks her little sister to class in my room every single morning. She says kind things to her and gives her a hug. At the beginning of the year, when Naomi was a little scared, she walked her all the way in the classroom and helped get her settled. Big little leader here. So way to go, Yasmin.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, great.
She has a little smile. Yeah.
Well, that is cuteness overload. Next up, we will move on to Mr. V from South Grove. Mr. V, our Assistant Principal, is stepping in for Mrs. Cotter. And I understand you kind of begged to be here tonight.
Absolutely. I'd do anything I can to be here to represent our students and school.
Thank you for that.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening. It's my pleasure. Ms. Kaya Kramer, come this direction, please. Kaya, thank you. Is a fourth-grade student and was nominated by her homeroom teacher, Ms. Norton. And Ms. Norton goes on to say Kaya goes out of her way to help her teachers. She's an excellent role model and loves to help students that are struggling with classwork or skills. She's a very supportive friend to all that needs one. She's organized and a very hard worker. Ms. Heron, who was one of her third-grade teachers last year, said Kaya is an exemplary student that is kind and hardworking. Every day, she comes to school ready to do her best and is a wonderful example for kids to follow. She is a lot of fun to work with because how creative she can be when writing and creating something that is all on her own. She's truly a unique student that makes teaching enjoyable. Her other third-grade teacher last year, Ms. Hooper, Ms. Murer, who's now Ms. Hooper, in third grade, Kaya was a role model for her peers. She is a hard worker and impressed me every day with her dedication to her academics. Some guy, I don't know, Mr. Von Dilligan, says Kaya is the definition of what South Grove Elementary represents. Kaya brings her best effort daily and is always willing to lend a helpful hand. Kaya's future has unlimited potential, and I can't wait to see all of her success. And last but not least, do you know Principal Cotter? Principal Cotter says, Kaya is a perfect choice for South Grove Student of the Month. She is enthusiastic about learning and consistently gives her best effort. Kaya excels academically and routinely reaches her growth targets. We have truly enjoyed getting to know Kaya over the past few years and look forward to celebrating her continued success. Congratulations on being, excuse me, our school-wide Student of the Month. We are incredibly proud of you. Indeed, we are.
Poor Mr. V. Wonderful. Very good. And we have Mr. Carr from Central Intermediate School going to introduce his Kenley.
Central would like to recognize Ms. Kenley Gonzalez. Come on up. When Kenley's name came across as being nominated by our teachers, it was a really, really easy choice. And Ms. Harris and I were both really excited that her name was on the list of students. The smile that you see now is what you get every single day with Kenley. Even when things are difficult or challenging for her, she just smiles through it, and she does a great job. She's one of our student athletes at Central. It just adds a lot of value being there. So I was going to read really quickly what her teachers said about her. Said, Kenley shows all traits of being an ideal Central Intermediate citizen. She goes above and beyond to help others and include everyone. She's extremely respectful and willing to help adults and peers anytime it is needed. She comes to school each and every day with a positive attitude and a high drive to be very successful. Mr. Harris say, I would say her positive personality is infectious. She always has a smile on her face, which brings joy to those around her. Kenley comes to school every day and leads by example and has a natural ability to make the day better for anyone around her. It was a really easy choice for Kenley to be our Student of the Month. Good job.
Wonderful. Well, since we have a big track meet tonight, apparently, I think we also have a baseball game going on over on the field. Typically, our athletic director would be here to introduce our Athletes of the Month, but we are lucky enough to have Coach Kestner do the very same. So Coach Casey Kestner will invite you to come on up, and I believe you're going to be celebrating your Athletes of the Month. Thanks for being here.
Okay, just the one. Okay. Hi. Addie's so much taller than me, so we have to... I know. Okay. So this is Addison Corn, and 100% our nominee from the varsity softball team this month. Coaches and I all agreed it would be her. So she hit her first career homerun against Seymour and her first career grand slam against New Albany. Like, that doesn't happen sometimes in a whole high school career, right? And she did both of them in one weekend, which is nuts, okay? She's literally just started playing high school softball, yes. She's killing it at the plate, helping the Hornets come back in close pressure games. She's had some amazing plays in the field. She's all over the place. She's played second base. She's played left field. She's been at third base at practice. We're like, Addie, you're going to go where we need you, and she does. I think she's also pitched in the past. Have you pitched? Okay, I won't put you there. Okay. So she also has impeccable range. I mean, the girl can get to any ball. She's a gamer, for sure. She's competitive, and that's what we need to keep bringing into the program. So we love Addie, but I'm going to keep going. Okay. In the first four games, Addie's stats were, she was seven for 13. She had nine RBIs, two doubles, clearly the homerun, and a grand slam, which is crazy. I've never hit a grand slam in my entire life, and I played for a long time, just so you know. She's just had a freakish start as a freshman, and we're super excited for her. She deserves this shout-out and this acknowledgement for her awesome start to her first softball career here at Beach Grove. She's an amazing kid. She's a great teammate. She's super coachable, and she's fun to be around. She's actually coming more and more out of her shell. I think yesterday at practice, we had a little bit of a scene where we're screaming, we're doing cheerleading moves, we're doing all the things during BP. So, oh, okay, we'll share that. But anyways, she's starting to come out of her shell because she's super quiet. She's very to herself, but I just love seeing that fun side, too. She's stepping up, and she's handling her role as a varsity teammate. Once again, just like she's been here for four years. She's going to be fun to watch. So keep Addie Corn on your watch list this spring and in the future. She has an amazing softball career ahead of her, and I do believe she should play college softball. But she's also a good volleyball player, so, you know. She'll have her pick. So this is Addison Corn.
One of my favorite memories was sitting with Addie's mom when the boys were at the sectional game, and you were like petting your hands for half the game. So I think we're going to have to do the same for Addie, right? So great. Wonderful. Wonderful. Well, that concludes our celebrations of our Students of the Month and Athletes of the Month for tonight. We might have a couple of students board that will be coming over from track because they are also going to be honored, but they're busy right now. So just, we'll adjust as we need. But tonight, for our visitors, we're going to take a break in our meeting. So you are more than welcome to take a few pictures before you leave. But for our purposes this evening, we are concluded. So thank you so much for being here, and we're so proud of all of you. Congratulations.
Hello, all right. I am going to set the timer just so I don't get the evil eye, even though I might still.
All right, so let's go ahead and go in here. Had to do it. I had to have a visual. I just had to. It's in my soul. But I just wanted to kind of say that communication obviously doesn't look the same as when we grew up, and we being a certain type now. Yes, we still do watch Andrew Griffith every single night. But the point of that is we have to kind of adjust to the changes, so that's why we're here. Why? What I want you to know is that what we do, the decisions we make, are not on a whim. This original goal is from my strategic communications plan that I've had, and it has been adjusted, but basically my first goal of, I have four. If I did every goal and I did everything, we would be here forever. So I am going to, we're just going to kind of focus on the first goal, which is building trust and pride in our schools by strengthening relationships, both within our district and with the community, so that everyone feels supported, valued, and connected. And the word "connected" is where I'm really going to focus, which goes with our strategic communication plan with the Lilly Endowment Grant. One of those goals with the community engagement communication, seamless, accessible, and transparent. Families, staff, students, and community partners understand where they can access information from. So if we can kind of marry these two goals, then that's where what I'm going to kind of present to you comes from. What I'm going to focus on today is print and digital, common communication platforms, and ease of use. So, first one is Parent Square. Of the three that I'm going to discuss, the Parent Square will take the longest, so do not panic. The other ones will be quicker. Usually, I don't read slides. I think that you're adults. But I do want to focus on a few things, so I'm going to read this. These are the top seven reasons why I love Parent Square, why we decided on Parent Square, and why it's important. It is a unified platform. It's a single platform for all school communications. This replaces multiple apps or systems. It's really funny, and if I would have done this, if I had not finished this, I would have taken a screenshot. My daughter sent me a message today, not sure what she was doing. She's supposed to be working, but she tidied up her iPhone with all her apps and like folders, because we have so many of those, right? Especially if you have kids, you've got, so this should be one unified platform. It's also two-way communication. Whether some people believe it or not, I've seen, this can be like a text. It can be like a DM. It can be like a chat. There's multiple channels. Within this platform is email, text, app, and the website. Mass notifications, that's one everybody knows, right? The mass notifications is what's really come to our attention. We've had a lot of those, right? We've had water. We've had electricity, and that's where we get that. And then we narrow it down to classrooms. You've got classroom posts. Think of it a lot of times as it can be like a Facebook post, or it can be almost like a Twitter or an X. You have the one-to-one messages. And my favorite probably, and what I really have found just to be so beneficial, is the automatic language translation. It doesn't matter what the family, when a family moves into Beech Grove, they will have their language. And I'm going to explain that here in just a second. The most important thing, I think, though, is this. What if I'm not getting notifications? And I don't feel like this is as big of a problem as it used to be, but I do want to point it out. And there was this cute little, I'm not going to touch it. Never mind. I was going to point something. I'm good. So here's mine. I have my email, my text, and my app, all to instant. A lot of people do digest. If you're unfamiliar with digest means, that means at 6:00 PM every day, you're going to get all the notifications. Some people want that, right? Some people find that's too much. It's a preference. Some people don't want their email to go, so you can toggle it to off. Text, apps, the thing that we fought, we didn't fight, but what I found out, the school alerts, those are automatically defaulted on. Sometimes people would get in there and play around with it. So we did determine that that is one thing, that we did a notification out to the families to make sure that you do have that toggled as on. Again, this is a bird's eye. There is so much I could go in, and we can talk about more later. You know, you can email me or text me. We can talk about that. All right. This is what everybody's familiar with, I believe. These are mine. We've got, the first one is a text, next one's an email, phone call, right? We know those. This is what I want to show you that you might not all see. This would be our point of view. Now, I do have different admin rights, so things might look a little wonky, but this is what I see. And so I did ask Mr. Garmin if he would get on there and respond to me so I could do a screenshot. I said, "Good morning." He said, "Doing well." I don't know why, but I realized that after I took a screenshot, he didn't even, but that's okay. On the computer, if you're messaging a student, a parent, well, not student, a parent, a family member, you're going to see that. That's what the mobile, or that's what the desktop looks like. This is what the mobile looks like. I deleted, I whited out, or it's blacked out some of the names. That is an actual chain of thought. I don't know what I'm trying to say on that one. But it's more personalized. To me, if I look at that, that looks like my iPhone, right? The last names have been crossed out, but the names on my phone, that is the mobile view. And here's what I think is really powerful and neat. There's two things you can do with your mobile, well, in Parent Square. You can do a direct message. You create a separate conversation for each recipient, like BCCs, but only the person you're sending it to sees it. And here's why this is powerful, and this is why it's powerful from some teachers I've talked to. This is what I did. If you direct a message, and I'll show you, let's see, it's on this last one, I think it was. Where it says "New message," you're able to choose "Direct" or "Group." Both great. If you choose "Direct," you can still send that out to your entire class of parents, but they, when they reply, it's just to you. They don't know you're sending it out to everyone, and it feels very personal. So you might say, "Hey, tomorrow's the Valentine's party. Don't forget, the boxes need to be here." And I'd have to look at some of these messages. Can't see it very well. "Hey, if you're receiving this, your child needs to complete the three e-learning assignments." I think that's what that was going to say. He responds, no, I don't think, I don't think I have a response on there. But where it says "John and seven more," that was the original. Those that follow are the responses. They don't, everybody doesn't see it when you choose it that way. It feels more personable, and you can, it feels like you're having a text conversation. The group conversation is just like that. "Hey, guys, if you decide you want to do a group, you're getting it all." If somebody replies, everybody sees it. So there's our, that's just what it looks like on the mobile. And again, those are what it looks on the mobile. Most people would probably think, so let's go back. The first one, that is my notification, whether it's an alert, whether it's an individual message. The second one there in the middle, that's my Hornet Blast. That went out to everyone, right? The one under it was just Mr. Brian Garmin responding to my "Good morning." When I click on that, it takes me to the middle one. Then we can begin our text conversation. And that's just another one right there. That is, then that one continues off of that message with John. The name wasn't John, because it looks like a female in that picture. But I just wanted you to see what it looks like on the mobile.
Are those all archived, like email?
Yes, they're all archived, yeah. For records require, for the law, so we, everything is legally, we, all the records, oh, what is that? How many years? It's archived. It's everything. And we can pull it out very easily. Right, here's what I love. Direct messages, whether they're a group conversation, whatever they are, are automatically translated to the user's preferred language. Now, I talked to Stephanie today, Stephanie Harris-Sweet. She did say one of her struggles with, historically with her MLL families, is they didn't know to click that, right? So she has worked to make sure that all the families have their language in there. And so she's just been amazing at that. But once you do it, then you can see. And hopefully you can see on the sheets you have, because I know that's kind of hard. But this, this right here is, I took from the Parent Square notes that give us examples. So this is an example. This is not one of our families. But what we would see would be, "Thank you. That makes me very happy." What they saw, what they did was gracias, whatever that says. And here's another example. The left is the desktop, the right's the mobile. It's personal preference, right, what they want to use? But it feels, it feels familiar. It feels like their phone, and it feels like they're having that conversation. Right, these are just insights. I'm not going over this. But I have an insight page, and if you have, if you have admin rights, you can see these things. This shows you, if you would really look at it, 99% up there means that 99% of families were contacted. We have gone over that. I feel like it was, we talked about it, it might have been the Holy Cross or the Holy Name, some families. We have checked every single family. Now, I will, you can see it better here. If you look up here, email, we have 2,530 parents with emails. 2,482 of those have opted to receive emails. And it tells us, right? If you look at the green and the red, the red, 0% failed. Text, 0% failed. App, 0% failed. We are able to go in there, and if, well, if we have a new family, if I can go in there every once in a while and I'll say, "Hey, kind of secretary, do we know why this is bouncing back? What's happening? This family is probably not getting our messages, and why?" And it'll tell us. It syncs directly with Skyward. So if Skyward, if the information is incorrect in Skyward, it's going to be incorrect in Parent Square. And then this says 56% have downloaded the app. More stats, the features we're using, if you see in the numbers, so far since we've had this, two years, maybe two, 109,820 direct messages have been sent out. Over 13,000 of those are threads, meaning it's a whole conversation. It's not a one-way, right? So you can send out a direct message, but if it's not a two-way conversation, what's it really, right? We don't know, but that tells you that there's over 13,000 threads. Some other, you know, posts, we can, you know, we could talk, we can dig in forever. This is a chart, and I pulled this for the last month. Do you guys see why the chart goes down of communication? It's spring break. Yeah, it's break, right. So that one's, but you can see, maybe is there a pattern? If we really went to study it, I don't think, you know, it's that deep. But there's probably 20 more of these different things we can study. And then on this page, what I want you to look at is the Help button. The Help button in the corner, the question mark, I clicked that and pulled down. If I did this live, I don't always trust myself to click on something and there's personal information. So I've just done screenshots. But this help, all that help is available to everyone. Administrator, parent, child, teacher. I will tell you, they are incredibly responsive. They have been to me. So for example, I love the chat. Reason I love the chat is if, it says, "Your estimated wait time is one to three minutes." How many times have, like, I've been on something, and then I'm like, "I don't have time to wait." And then it goes away. They're like, "Are you still here?" They, when they see that you've left, you get an email, and then they'll follow up with email. I have not one time not had my problem solved. Very kind people. I've had great relationships with. And I don't even remember what I asked, and this was a real one. I asked, oh, yeah. It says, "You're the newsletter. We just started using their version with Studio Editor." I said, "Hi, I'm using Studio Editor for the first time. I want to send it to community members that are not part of Parent Square. Doesn't appear I can simply send the link. Do I need to add them all to a group first? Thanks." They, we figured this all out. I'm not an expert. I've learned, right? Then if you don't like the instant chat, maybe you don't want that, you just want to go, there is a whole Help site where you can get all kinds of videos, flyers. If you have a family that's new and they don't understand it, everything's there. And I also like at the top, it'll, all things operational. They will let you know if there's any problems. Bird's Eye, it is really cool, guys. Like, there's so much I wish I could show you. Any questions on that part? Okay, newsletter. You've seen it. It's the new, it's the new version. I think what's interesting, what bothered me for a while was that it looked different on different devices. And I would painstakingly make it look a certain way, because I love the aesthetic, and then it would look different. I'm over it. I mean, I can't help it. But, so this is my phone's mobile version. It's in portrait mode, right, as your cell phones do. I like the mobile version. I like the, but everybody's phone's different. You know, there's Androids, there's iPhones, and some people have the dark background, the light background. There's your desktop. See, I mean, huge difference, kind of, you know, but desktop is more landscape. So where two of the flyers for the community dinner are side by side, it's up and down on the phone. It's just a different way to look at it, and some people prefer the desktop version. Some people prefer the mobile, some, you know, there's more, I think there's extra space sometimes in the mobile, but... And then, we now have a paper copy called the Hornet Blast Mini. It's a work in progress. These are currently at City Hall, the library, the senior center. Took them to Churchman Woods, right, staff, we'd had them before, a couple of the shops. It's nothing new. It's the exact same information, less, obviously, information that you have. But it's something that the community could pick up. It's both-sided. They could take a look. Maybe they're interested. Maybe they'll go to our website. Maybe they'll take a look. Maybe they'll join our Facebook page. So it's, it's, it's just got, and Dr. Hammack's super in his corner letter is also in there, along with some highlights. I like to give a couple of highlights of some things coming up, so the community could see it. I hope to expand this, right? A little more budget, we can hopefully expand that and do all three. All right, told you that was quick. Any questions on the newsletters or how you're getting them? All right, the last thing. Oh, okay, sorry, but I'm almost done. Okay, this is the last thing. This is pretty quick. Oh, is it possible? It doesn't matter. The arrows are just off the screen a little bit. It's totally fine. The very top, everybody understands the search bar. Hopefully you've seen that we have the search bar. At the bottom is what's new. It's our new chat, right? Okay, so at the very bottom, where the arrow is on your website, there's a little caption button. It's the chat. So I just asked it the other day, "Hi." Oh, no, I said, "Hi, when is the first softball game?" And it said, "The first softball game is scheduled for March 25th, 2025. It will be a varsity..." Right, that's, that's AI. I didn't do that. That's all AI. It scans our website, which is telling me there are some things I need to work on, and I'll show you on that one. Here's another one. I'm not going to, you know, I have another question. "I'm interested in substitute teaching." That's great to hear. Beech Grove City Schools partners with Kelly Education, and it tells you what to do. This is just showing you the mobile device. Now, sometimes you're not going to get the answer that you want, right? I put, "My son is having issues on the bus. Who can I contact?" I loved this, though. First the bus driver, then the building assistant principal, principal, like, it kept going up. We didn't train it to do that, but I love that chain of command. There are times we'll say, "I'm not sure." There is a Contact Us button also built in at the end. They can say, "I don't know what I want. I'm going to contact." And then when you get on the Contact Us, it will give you, if you haven't been on there, there's a drop-down menu. It's got everybody here. It's got schools, transportation, Dartwells. If you have a question, that comes to me, and then I get that out. The last thing, at the end of every week, I get, I get to see all the chats. People, I have seen a few people use it. What I like about this is if I'm getting the same questions over and over, it tells me that I don't have that readily available on my website, our website. If I see something that says, "I don't recognize your question," or it's the same questions, then I'm like, "I got to do something." So that's really nice to help analyze. And that's your bird's eye of that.
Were you looking at how the AI responds?
Yes, yes.
Because like, I was kind of wondering if it scans and gets last year's softball calendar or something.
Yeah, there was one thing, Brian, and I want to say it was the calendar. I asked something about the calendar more generic. We have two calendars up on the, on the website, right? We have the current calendar, and we have the future calendar. And I believe it did something different there, and I'm like, "Oh." Like, you know, it is AI, and it's great, but you do have to sometimes like narrow down the questions. But yeah, it will give me all this. Like, it will show me the response. It'll show me, and then what they asked and what the response was.
Yeah, that's great. One other question on the translations. Have we gotten any feedback from families to say, "This is great. It worked out okay. I can understand what it says"?
I go through Stephanie mainly, and she's acted like it's wonderful. It's a learning curve to understand. I think, I think it's been more surprising to the families in a good way. Like, "Oh, we're being heard. We're being," like, I get to use my home language right now. I don't have to worry about, you know, the cousin that's moved in to help me translate. It will do it for him. There is a guiding, like, she's had to kind of help. There is a guiding, like, she's had to kind of help say, let's get this set up, let's do this, let's do that, and then everything comes through. Obviously, nothing's perfect, but I think, you know, we're working it through and we're figuring out the process and we're figuring out all the bugs and everything.
Excellent.
AI has bugs, right?
Yeah.
But I do like that it will come out and say, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to this question.
That's great.
Instead of making, so.
ParentsWord has been a game changer as far as communication.
Good.
For us, I know, apparently, it's private, it's ParentSquare, we're seeing probably about three to four times the parents.
Good.
We can't find this, I must say. It hasn't changed anything other than the means of communication that we're using, so.
Good.
I'd really appreciate it.
And hopefully the ease is getting better. I think there was a lot of angst in the very beginning, like, another thing. But I think, like, Rob, you and I kind of figured out with the preschool enrollment, the power of ParentSquare, right? We tried it on the, in the newsletter. Now, I'm not sure I had it in the best spot in the newsletter, right? I think I would, but we put it in ParentSquare. Would you get like 20 today or 20, like? Yeah. So it, you know, it's just, it's where we get the information. The Hornet Blast is a great source of information. If you've noticed, it's, it's in sections, but ParentSquare is, is more of an immediate, it gets that there, they don't have to read through everything I have, right? It's a lot. Those newsletters are a lot. But we want, we want to do information in every different way because everybody responds in a different way to different technology. Girl.
Do you hear much feedback or get any questions just from the community, people who don't have kids in school here?
Like, like through the website?
Or social, well, I shouldn't say social media.
Well, we got a lot of.
Yeah, I don't want to know about that one. I mean, the website or anything that they send in a newsletter, do they reach out to the schools very often?
I get a lot from the contact us, it's such a variety.
Okay, I'm just.
It is, we do, and I get a lot of community, we get everything from enrollment to the bizarre, we get, we have had some compliments, we've had, you know, people say, central elementary parking or playground, you know, at 9:00 PM this happened. We get a lot of reporting things, too. And, and I have yet to, these guys are incredible and they're secretaries. When I forward something to them, like, we'll have an issue, I've yet to see something that wasn't turned around in 24 hours or wasn't dealt with. I've, knock on wood, I don't think I've had one person double back on me and say, I never got a reply from that principal, I never got a reply from them. I can't remember a time I've had that. And I will respond and say, thank you for, I'm sending this, if you don't hear within 48 hours, please contact me. I've not heard that. So hopefully, is that still working well, those website submissions, when we get issues and we can get them right out to you guys? I think we're getting used to that, too. Transportation was like, people are right on it. Kevin Kinder is, I mean, I send something to transportation, it's right back. He's taking care of it, whatever he's had to do. Okay. Anytime you need any questions or you want, if you want any statistics, analytics, if you're like, I need to know, just ask me, I can send, I can download, we can send whatever we need.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Let's move on to personnel operations with Mr. Garment.
Let's see, just a few highlights here. Under personnel, just wanted to bring attention, I guess, to the fact that, how much I appreciate the collaboration that we have in our corporation between our directors, our central office folks, and, you know, as our budgets become more difficult, just that collaboration that we have and constantly being able to find new ways to streamline our educational programming and, you know, and refine our systems to just be more efficient, which has resulted in a lot of savings. We, we talk about that frequently, about where we were three years ago or four years ago and where we are now. And I just think that that collaboration, that, I guess, commitment from everybody has been great and it makes the job so much easier. Some current challenges, we really have challenge helping our new teachers that we're recruiting understand anything beyond just a salary. So I know a lot of corporations have begun to kind of change, to kind of shift money away from benefits and more toward base salary because they think that's what gets the attention. I think the strategy that I like is to help young people understand better that those benefits are real dollars. So we've worked together, Mitzi and I have actually been working on this, she's been putting together some flyers and things that we can give to our prospective teachers that help them understand, if this is my base salary and then I add all these benefits on there that Beach Grove offers, and Beach Grove benefits are extremely good, then they can understand what that real dollar value is for their first year of compensation, whether they have a bachelor's degree or a master's degree. And we've been using that here in the last, oh, about year, I guess, of recruiting and I've been getting really good feedback from people that say, wow, yeah, I took this home and, and had my mom or dad look at it and they were, you know, really emphasized to me that this is, this money may be deferred till later, but how important it is for me to see what those real dollars are. So hopefully that strategy will continue to help us as we recruit new teachers. From transportation, one of our micro mini buses that we ordered over a year ago is, will be here within the next couple of weeks, so that's good news. We always have high demand for ECA trips in the spring, so we're looking forward to getting that one. A current challenge, the annual safety inspection that is supposed to take place typically in April has been delayed to June. The state police, I'm not quite sure, they just said they've been experiencing, or they're shorthanded, I'm not sure exactly why, if they're just experiencing a shortage in employees or what's going on, but that won't happen until June. So it does create a little bit of a problem if we identify anything major with our buses. We, we do have some older buses, getting that turned around and having it ready for students on July 30th could be a little bit of a challenge, but Johnny is an amazing mechanic and he is constantly going through those buses and making sure that he's very proactive in identifying anything that might be a problem in inspection. And, and the lift that we purchased that I think I informed you guys about a couple weeks, a couple mornings ago, has been great. It allows us to do so much more maintenance and we don't have to outsource that anymore, so it's a big cost savings for us. School safety, Mr. Mann has done a great job of really trying to get more of our building leaders through the Indiana School Safety Specialist Academy, and I believe that a bunch of them, you can do it in the fall or the spring, and I think a bunch of you guys are doing it right now. So it's just nice to have more people at the building levels that are trained and then once you get through that initial training, then the advanced training happens every year. So getting that done is, is going to be a positive for us. We do have some, you know, we're starting to identify and trying to identify where we have some visibility, I guess, gaps with our security cameras and getting those addressed. So we've been working on that. I know Central had a couple of areas that were identified that we're working right now to get resolved. Food service, just wanted to give a big thanks to Clara and her team. We just, you know, as you guys know, we had a huge audit and the food service was clean. So that's a big, we don't have to, you know, worry about how corrective actions and all the different things we're going to do. And a huge part of that is our Chartwells team and Clara, so I think Julie would agree with me on that, so. A current challenge for food service is, we were luckily chosen for the, this National School Lunch Program survey. Initially, we were told it was voluntary and then when I said, well, I'm not sure we want to participate, then I was cited the federal law that said, we have to participate. So we are participating, it's, it's a pretty big, it's not an audit, but it feels like an audit. So there's a tremendous amount of information that they've asked for, but they will be here next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And it's way Congress gathers information on the National School Lunch Program, which then informs the funding of it and just the programming in general. So that's next week. And then for facilities, grounds, maintenance, we are still working through the custodial services contract, that's been a good experience. We, we narrowed it down to four vendors that, that came and did presentations for us. I thought the presentations were great. That was on Tuesday, April 1st, and now we're just kind of moving into that next phase where we begin to really evaluate those presentations and all of those submissions that we got with their, not just the presentation, but their proposals. And we'll talk a little bit about that more later. Current challenge is just really continuing to identify, you know, our critical infrastructure needs, whether those be roofs or boilers or water heaters or parking lots, and trying to make sure that we prioritize those things that have to be done first and then align those with the budget, you know, and the, and the dollars that we're going to have available. So we have three roof systems, we got great bids on three of the roof systems that are going to be replaced. Hopefully they'll be starting before too long. We have a couple at Central, we have a boiler that needs to be replaced, some other heating and cooling issues that we're working on getting bids for right now. So we always get three bids for that and we hope that we get a really good price. We got a great news on the water line break, by the way, at the middle school. I was really, Dale and I had a bet, he thought 65,000, I thought 75,000, it was 25,000. So we were both really wrong. So yeah, that was great news to get because every dollar really matters, so. That's it.
Ryan, other than the power going out this past week, did we have any damage?
No.
Really lucky.
Yeah, no, it was just that power and I guess they were very, they were clearly overwhelmed, you know, so it was unfortunate that we, we had a lot of things that were a result of that, school e-learning, but also some events that we had, facilities that we had rented that were big events. But luckily, Mackenzie and Andy have been able to get those rescheduled because, you guys probably aren't necessarily aware, but some of our facility rentals can bring as much as 25,000 in a weekend over a three-day period, which is huge for not only the operations, but also, you know, maintenance of the, of those facilities, but also helps support the band and music programs, the athletic programs. So Mackenzie and Andy are, and Garrett, too, are amazing at helping me with all of that and processing through all that, and they were able to get them rescheduled. So I was really happy because I was worried that, you know, with the electricity out and then they cancel, we had to cancel on them, that they wouldn't come back, but they did.
Thank you.
Yep.
Let's move on to Josh. I'm sorry. Oh yeah, let's do that. Can I get a motion to approve the employment recommendations?
I'll make the motion to approve the employment recommendations.
Janice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Now, let's move on to Josh.
Just a few updates. Wanted to let the board know that we are anxiously waiting to hear from the Lilly Endowment regarding our Phase Two submission. We should hear the indicated by the end of this month about Phase Two, that was the non-competitive portion of the grant. And then the concept paper for Phase Three was submitted last week and we got that in about a week ahead of time and that felt like, I just, it, it was a very heavy lift and I am so grateful for spring break, I can't even tell you, because we needed that time to be able to get everything pulled together and it was such a gift to do that without the distraction of a typical day. I'm very, very proud of that submission. There is more time involved in waiting on that response, but effectively, once the concept paper is approved, and when it is approved, then we would be invited to apply for that final third round. So still many steps to take in order to get to full resolution on the third phase for the Lilly Endowment Grant, but we should be getting things rolling here with Phase Two by the end of the month. Knitted into that is our strategic planning work. Thank you, Tara, who participated in our last full day of work with the Broad-based Steering Committee. We have key leads from each of the different strategic goal areas that are meeting next week with the team from Education Elements to refine all the work that has been done to this point. And we are still on track to present to the board in work session next month on all of our strategic goal areas and the action plans and the measurable outcomes that we have identified therein. We still have another day and a half with Ed Elements that we are sort of working through what that will look like, bringing our strategic, our steering committee together likely one more time to be able to analyze the last work product, but then we would talk about launch and what that will look like. So the board will be presented with that content in May during the work session. In June, I will present that content publicly in our public board meeting. And then in July, I will present it to the broader community during the State of the Schools presentation that will take place with the Greater Beach Grove Chamber of Commerce. We, unfortunately, because of the power outage at the high school last week, we needed to postpone our final session of our Beach Grove Connect Ambassador Program. Thanks to Janice for being a participant in that program. I think of the things that we have done as far as outreach and communication, this is one of my very favorites and really credit Mitzi with bringing this program to Beach Grove. It has been such a gift to get to know community members on this deeper level. And quite frankly, you know, this, this modification of our board meetings to have different content that is presented to you all is a direct result of these Beach Grove Connect Program Lunch and Learn series. And just, we are absolutely, all systems go with making sure that this is happening again next year. We will have a new cohort of individuals and are hoping to even expand the number of individuals that are, are being served in that program. I think it will, will really serve us well. So in the last session, those individuals will graduate as ambassadors from the program we have rescheduled here in the next few weeks and look forward to putting a bow on our first year, our inaugural year of the Beach Grove Connect Ambassador Program. Of course, I just wanted the board to be aware and certainly our community that this is assessment season. This is a miserable time to be a third through eighth grader. It is very, very hard as students are spending a whole lot of time knee-deep in the I-Learn Assessment Protocol, but hats off to our leaders, our intervention specialists who have done an amazing job of mapping out our assessment work. Mr. Ressler has done an incredible job to get us to a space where our technology is prepared and ready. It's just a tough time of the year, the students really carry it, the teachers are just hats off to getting through days when, when this work is going on. It is so hard, but we are very excited to see the outcomes of extraordinary, and we know, improvement that our students will be evidencing through these assessments. And then last but not least, in my update to you all, I just wanted to touch on our legislative session. Of course, we are knee-deep in lots of legislative activity. We was talking with April and Brian before the meeting started and it is every day that things are changing at this phase of the legislative cycle. Some days you hear news that you think is pretty good, some days you hear news that is tragic, and some days it's news that's in between. And so we are responding, I am advocating daily and, and we continue just to distill the content that is learned of a day and doing our best to advocate for Beach Grove daily. So session will end at the end of the month and right now, we are in a phase where we've just received sort of an update on what Senate Bill One impact would look like, that's the operational side of the House. And we do expect to hear very, very soon what the runs will look like from the House and that's what you would receive on the education fund side of the House through tuition support. We do understand that this is going to be tied to the April forecast, which is apparently a, a big deal as far as where this budget will head. And we are, are understanding that while Indiana forecasts might look favorable, that there are very deep concerns about what is happening federally and how that might ultimately impact the economics of the state. So there are just, we've been given sort of the last 48 hours some tea leaves to read that while the forecast might look positive, there is a, a general tension about what's happening and, and tension, it doesn't help when it comes to sort of financial outlay. But we continue to advocate strongly. I do appreciate our representatives and those who are willing to sit down with us and hear our story. I do believe it's heard, but these are certainly times that I would call anxiety-ridden and we, we do our best, that's for sure. So that's all that I had as far as my updates for you all this evening. We did have one sort of carryover action from last month regarding that action to void those stale-dated checks. Thanks to Julie for getting a little bit more info there. Are there any questions about that action before we got into it? All right then. Mr. President.
Can I get a motion to approve the void of stale-dated checks?
So will.
Beth?
I'll second.
Tara? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Minutes and claims, let's do these together. Minutes and claims. Minutes and claims from March of 2025's regular meeting, can I get a motion?
I'll second.
Janice and April? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the fundraiser?
I had one question on the donations, I didn't see who actually is donating, is that like a common thing, where we get anonymous donations?
Hold on, they pulled up 45.
It was like, everyone's.
Was that donation card?
They donated it to this Hamlet's program, they've been a partnership for a while, and they've introduced their relationship through a threshold of $4,000, they did $4,000 to a thousand dollars.
Wonderful. Thank you.
The form is good, it just doesn't have a place to say who, so, we could update that.
And it might, it might not have been understood what awarding agency meant, I bet that's what happened, an agency contact.
Their check doesn't have any information on it, I could see the signature, and I was like, who, what is that signature, like?
It's really nice.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very generous gift.
Yeah, that's great.
Make sure that's filled out completely in the future, sorry about that.
So can I get a motion to approve the fundraisers, the field trips, and the donations?
I will.
Beth on all, second on all. Brian? All those in favor?
Aye.
Community reports?
I have a little bit of one for C-9, but not a whole lot of information. So, last month, we met, and again, the C-9 meeting is two days after this one, so you're hearing things about them online. But we were getting ready for spring break, which was apparently somewhat difficult because of all the schedules being different amongst the different schools. So, that was something that was being discussed a little bit. There is a planned April 16th C-9 Framework Committee discussion, where they're talking about, you know, ways to improve enrollment at C-9, so that'll be upcoming. I think that Mary's story is.
Mary and Lauren.
Okay, okay, yeah. And I'm not aware of students in the month yet, maybe it's because of spring break, but they haven't sent out an email to me yet on this, so we'll find out at the meeting on Thursday, and hopefully, if I hear anything, I'll let you guys know. There's also some discussion about renewing Dr. Kovach's contract soon, so that's something that we're planning around. And there's, as you mentioned, a little bit of uncertainty among budgets, and also the grants that are being applied for, we don't know how much is going to be for each grant, so I guess we're just gonna wait to see on those things. So, that's the update we got for this part last month.
Tomorrow is the Mayor's Lunch for Parks, which is put on by the Parks Foundation to benefit the community center and all of the Trove Parks, so there's a couple seats left, if you still wanna come, we'll let you in. The Tea Room is catering, and it is from 11:30 to 1:00 at 524 Events.
Success stories.
I'll share something that, you know, is sort of beyond operations of our schools. We have asked a lot of, Mr. Garmin, when you started your update this evening, you mentioned that with the reductions that we've made in our staffing, we've all sort of had to kind of pick up a little bit more, and thank you for saying that, that is certainly something that I have observed from your office, as I look at our entire team, it is something for which I am so grateful, and as we're sort of rounding out a year here under our new world, I'm just very grateful. I wanted to say, Steph is one of the number, Steph picked up all of the data reporting responsibilities that Gayosis held, and that has not been easy. Steph was here last night until about 10:30, and was working on a report that was incredibly challenging to submit. It's, this is evidence of, I think, what happens across our school district every day, folks who just step up and make sure that the work gets done, and I'm deeply, deeply grateful, so, thank you for, well, I don't think you felt like it was a success, I think we are all grateful to everyone who is stepping up to really make it work here, and I just hold mad love and respect for the team of Beech Grove City Schools.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Tara and April, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at 7:15.
Very good.